Cool, right, good evening everyone, thanks for joining us. This is the Planning Committee meeting for Intown Council, I'm Steve Tanner, I'll be chairing this evening. Main committee is available to as many people, so we give you a hybrid setup here in room 1 in the town hall and on live by Zoom. A little housekeeping emergency exit is at the door turned left. Assembly point is in the car park and toilet is straight out the door. The panelists on Zoom, please use your look, try and raise hand by clicking on the bottom of your screen. Any attendees on Zoom, please post questions to enable attendees' names to become visible on the questions board for the record as your question is answered. So that was the attendees in the room. Jane's going to plug tonight, Becky will manage the queue questions board and possibly set things like and all the tech. Meeting will be recorded for minutes in purposes and we live stream to our YouTube channel.
Not today.
Not today, sorry, we're not live streaming, we're going to catch up. Agree, apologies about absence.
From Fiona.
And Lisa. Did you clear any members' interests or declaration members' interests? No interest whatsoever. To agree the minutes of the meeting on the 13th of March 2005. Any questions about minutes? I'm sure you've all read them.
Yeah.
Close that for me. Yeah, thank you. Item number five, to consider the major plan application to see, is over to Jane.
Thank you very much, so the first application on the list is number 657 and the address is 37 Master Lane Room and it is an outline application with some matters reserved for the erection of one self-built dwelling with details of the access and layout. So here you can see the site location plan, the plot is outlined in red. The blue line indicates land within the applicant's ownership. There's no red there.
No, it hasn't come up.
So this, this is the red bit which doesn't show up very well on the TV screen but I can see it on, yeah, so that bit. And then on the proposed site plan, we're talking about this area here. So, one of the issues that's been raised on this application by neighbours and also by the civic society is the access through to the site. So I thought it would be useful just to show you that this is the access road leading up to the plot.
Is that, that house on the left?
This one?
Is that the front door, that, where you are?
Yes.
What's that door on the right? Is that, is that, that's not the, it's not two houses, is it?
That is two houses.
Oh yes, actually, yeah.
One on the right, is that one in Mitchell Garden, proposed to be built?
Yes, yeah. So, in a bit more detail, I might be able to see the red line there. So, let's say the red line is the application site. We're not actually looking necessarily at the layout because that's one of the matters that's been reserved. So this is an indicative layout. And from the design and access statement, they stated that the parking arrangements allow entry into the lane in a forward gear with the ability to turn into the plot and manoeuvre correctly and easily so facing forward. The width of the access lane means that any traffic movements along it are slow so not causing undue disturbance to the neighbouring houses. And it also goes on to say, unfortunately that's wrong, right? That the access for Master Lane will be maintained with adequate turning and off-street parking space in the side of the proposed dwelling. There are sufficient on-street parking spaces for visitors. There will also be ample room adjacent to the site for vehicles to manoeuvre so that they are able to enter and exit the site in a forward gear. So looking at the indicative layout, with this being two parking spaces, it's difficult to see how you could enter, turn around and exit in a forward gear. The reason why obviously that is important is because highways are not keen on vehicles reversing out onto roads and incredibly narrow.
They won't manoeuvre.
Exactly. And, as I say, that has been raised by some of the neighbours who have submitted their objections. One states that any turning area is not in the ownership of the applicant and they only have pedestrian access. Whether that's true or not, I obviously can't confirm. They're also concerned about the fact that there'll be no access for emergency vehicles and they're also concerned about overlooking and loss of light. Which, given that this is an outline application and we don't know exactly the design or position of the house at the moment, that is hard to demonstrate. So, over to you.
Thanks.
Isn't there a look around for a microphone? Isn't there also an issue about the right of way?
Yes.
I'm just flagged up by one of the objectives, wasn't it?
Yes, they're saying that they have pedestrian access only. But as I say, I can't say whether that's true or not.
Just, just jumping, we go with your top questions because it's ridiculous. I mean, there's going to be an awful lot of wheelbarrows from down upstream on the building, isn't it?
Yes.
It is a tight lane, isn't it?
It is.
Jane, so although we've got an indicative site, um, plan there.
Yeah.
As we're only on outline, we're only interested in access.
Yeah, access is one of the matters for consideration.
So, the actual turning when they get on the site.
Yeah.
I mean, that house, the actual situation of that house could shift within that plot, couldn't it? To make the turning feasible?
It could.
I'm not sure how they do that, but in theory they could.
So the reason for them showing the indicative layout is they have to demonstrate that it's possible to accommodate the dwelling. If, it's difficult to understand why they've shown it in that way if you clearly can't turn a vehicle around. Unless, unless they're saying that the vehicle will be turned around, sort of euthanising some of the land over here. But the problem is, that's not within their ownership?
The, um, the bit next to the so-called driveway where the car is, that, that line that, uh... That one isn't the house, it forms almost a triangle next to the car.
That, that's show, that's in, that's in green.
There's a sort of a wedge here, what is that?
That looks like hard standing.
Is that what they're saying they might turn around with it?
Well, I don't think so because, as I say, that does look very much like a hard standing. But even so, it's difficult to show. I mean, what, what I would want to see is a diagram showing how that can be achieved, like a swept path analysis.
Yeah. I think that line where your cursor is, I think that's a train, isn't it? Is that some existing plant? You've got this existing plant.
Oh, yeah.
Or maybe a little wall, is it a wall?
It's difficult to tell.
Looking at street view, two, two things come up, one is that site is covered in trees.
Yes, yeah.
And the second thing is that, uh, after, this is a garage, this is, this is a double garage. This building here.
Yeah.
And there are, there's a car park there, it shows, these are garages but going, accessing that way.
Yeah.
The only way for these cars to get in there is the lane.
Yes.
So it is being used by vehicles.
It is, yeah.
As you were saying about usage and right of way and.
And where that car is parked, there is, not on the diagram but on the street view, you can see that there is room to turn around down there, but are they calling that access? Because beyond, so you see where, where they're talking about the double garage? Beyond that, just south of that there, that's the whole car park area.
Yeah. And the access is out through that, the lane?
Yeah, so perhaps that's what they're talking about then. It's much clearer here what it, what it could be.
These are, these are access from getting these cars.
This is where it should be, they're going to take down some trees there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think the problem is we're guessing.
Yeah, we are, yeah, we are, absolutely.
But I'm wondering if that's what they're describing is, do they have access beyond that double garage to turn around there? Because there is, if they, if they're allowed down there, there is quite a lot of room.
But even so, they would have to, yeah, still got the in and out. I would say for clarity, we should ask for a plan demonstrating how that manoeuvre would be possible.
So, you're saying that the, that double garage, the access to the double garage is through
Yes.
That, that lane, that's the only access. So that double garage and the other garages?
Yeah.
So there's all really significant physical movements up and down that lane?
But anybody using the new place would have, would only be able to use that, if I'm going to say they turn around by that double garage and the good will never owns that free house.
Yeah.
So they could put a gate across there if they wanted to be an old one.
They could, yeah.
So it's all a bit hearsay, isn't it? They're allowed to use that lane, they have to turn around there. Wasn't there also something about it not being big enough in minimum standards or something?
National Civic Society picked that, wasn't it?
The Civic Society have said that, uh...
Going to meet National Space Standards.
What did they want the music for this one? Uh, they've described it as a self-built, but it doesn't say whether or not they would actually min it themselves. At least not that I noticed.
The idea is that it's an individual standalone.
Separate address, yeah, not an annex.
An, I think, yeah. I think all we're talking about is access, my problem with his access, it's a pushback of something else. Yeah, we need more, very minimal, we need more information, yeah.
Yeah, the housing board.
So in, in principle, building a dwelling on that plot of land, as long as there is.
Yeah, I mean, principle, I mean, that's fine, but if they can squeeze it in amongst the trees.
Yeah.
You know, we need, what are the issues? The issue is access.
Yeah. It's been talking about lots of trees.
Lots of trees.
Yeah.
Space, it's, I don't know, not that fast to be able to.
Yeah.
Also, you're saying about where that house will set the orientation as well.
Overlooked in man days. Yeah. Is that, is that what you're asking as well?
Yeah, so that would come with any reserve matters application, I mean, generally you, you submit an outline if, I said generally. If you submit an outline application and, and you get approval and sell the plot on and then whoever buys it puts a reserve matters application in because they designed the house to, to their liking. Okay, well, how about, why go back and say that we would like to see a plan showing how the, um, the vehicle path can enter and exit the site in a forward gear? We'd like to see more information about any trees that will be blocked and space standards and.
Do you remember the, the planning for the Wigan? And then they make it come up there. They did the most complicated vehicle movement, they had to get a lorry in and out of the way.
Yeah.
So something like that, really?
Exactly, yeah, okay. That's fine. So the next one on the list.
Should we vote on that?
Oh, sorry, sorry, well, yeah, because we're actually making a decision, aren't we? But we should vote on that, yes.
We might get his own.
That's, we're voting on the fact that we are going to go back and ask for some more information on the detailed access.
I think it proposes that.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, uh, you know what?
Yeah.
Okay. Next is number 660, Arnis. It is lying bare feeling close and it's the direction of a two-storey office stroke games room following the demolition of a detached garage. So, this is the application site, this is the garage, existing garage. This is the whole of the application site outlined in red. Here shown in red is the footprint of the proposed games room office. And that is the, um, roof plan of the proposal. We might come back to that drawing in a minute. So here, in more detail, so this is the garage that is to be demolished. Just here you can see the neighbouring garage. This is the proposed footprint for ground floor plan of the garage, uh, sorry, games room stroke office. I'm showing it here a little bit in large so you can see the layout in more detail. And it also has a first floor where it's showing a home office, a store and shower room. So, the elevations, this is the existing elevation. This is the, the garage that is to be demolished and this is the neighbouring garage. And just for context, I've shown them, shown an extract from street view here. And then you can see this is the proposed games room office and next door's existing garage is still there. This here is the elevation that will be facing towards the rear of the, uh, host property. And you can see that is, although it's two-storey, it's, it's the same height as the, um, the bungalow. But it's the height of the windows here, we've got a Juliet balcony and a window here. And those windows will actually be on this elevation here. So there is concern from the neighbours here, as you can imagine, about overlooking and also the, uh, the height of it in relation to, um, oh, you know, if I go on to.
That whole cul-de-sac is bungalows, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
And now Mendick Drive behind is just two.
And then it's bungalows towards the brain drove and then houses.
There, there you go.
They're adding this all bungalow, doing it like.
That is.
Very intrusive.
So yes, it's all, all bungalows in that area. Um, and actually this, the, the garage is set back slightly, it's nothing right in front of their property. I think also it would impact on these properties that may reappear certainly in terms of overlooking into the garden. As I say, concern has been raised by the, um, by the neighbouring properties. The civic society have said that they've jet on the grounds that the proposed structure is too large and too high for its position. The mass will overbear on the adjacent property and create an adverse effect on neighbours in Mendick Drive, so that's the ones behind, enjoying a bi-overlooking no rear guidance from the first floor. First floor, full-length windows, open water, Juliet balcony. The development should be confined to a single story. Notwithstanding this, any concerns should be conditioned for ancillary use by occupants from number nine over there and not to be occupied as a separate dwelling or short-term letting, which I think I also had in my notes as well.
It looks like they're saying office games room, but really it's something else, actually, yeah.
If it was, if it was your again, maybe not so bad, but there's apple stories.
Yeah, if they got away with building it as an office game room, there's nothing there to stop them turning back to that big.
Well, it is a shower room, it's not a shower room. As soon as, as soon as Jane and I write it that, I've got very good.
But the, if you wanted to, if you wanted office and keeping a garage, they've got enough, um, room to do that.
Yeah.
They've got enough ground space to do both those things, haven't they?
Yeah, that's a huge one.
So they, they, they could, they could still, if they just want an office and garage, they could do that and that would be completely understandable because you've still got a long drive away.
Yeah, they could redevelop the garage and build next to the garage, couldn't they?
Square.
I'd sort of agree with what the Civic Society said, links the first two sentences.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely the, the, the height.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the over.
And the overlooking, that, I think that's.
We object on that basis.
Yeah.
Proposed. What an idea.
Yeah.
And that's your number two.
It has nothing like the shape of anything else, I imagine.
No, it's just, yeah, it's also a mark. Yeah. John Washington Prince, I don't know.
So, the next one on the list is number, uh, number 662 and 664. That's because there is an advertisement application and a listed building applications, although the plans were both far the same. I'm sure you're all fully got a wherewith where this site is made for.
Yeah.
Before the art is out and then before that, which is if anyway.
Sure.
Yeah.
They could just have a rotating sign.
I have no objection to the signage, I just think it's far too many lights.
Yeah, that was my criticism, it's lightastic, isn't it?
Yes, so i- i- in total, uh, 10 lights.
Let's go, do you, Joe? Number eight. I'm okay with eight.
Where is that?
I use that.
A, A's, so that, A is the sign.
Yeah, is it lit?
There's no lighting that I can see on that one, there is, uh, F is a light.
That's above the door?
That's a lantern light above the door and then.
That's all right, not my choice, but I don't.
And then C is the signboard.
Yeah.
And then we.
This is what we're thinking today. So we haven't got a problem, have they, we've got a problem with A, E, F and C?
It depends if there's nothing to walk around to see because there's a very skinny pavement.
I think it's on the wall, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's just a signboard.
Oh, no, I thought you meant that's the thing on the pavement.
Yeah.
So.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
What happened with that? Yeah, right.
And then there's G.
Yeah, well, unnecessary, isn't it?
Yeah. Hang on a minute, I need to write that.
There's lots of Gs.
So A, F, C.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Seven, seven Gs, because there's two more on there or something. Oh yeah, of course there is, yeah, only saying one view, yeah, one, two, three, four, five, yeah. So the Gs were a bit concerned about. The light, number B, the big V sign?
Yeah.
Why not?
Yeah, that's fine.
It's a commercial property.
No, the signs are fine, but the lighting.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I do, I, there's just, there's too many lights. I did think, because in the design and access statement, they, you know, they, they talked about, um, obviously safety and things like that and I thought perhaps it is quite dark there and then I realised this is street lighting. It is, absolutely, yeah.
I think they ought to rename it Bad Ox anyway, as you're saying, the light comes from the Bad Ox lot is. What about the lights above that, on the, on the left-hand picture? So they've got two of those, two downlights, haven't they, above the, the sign?
Yeah, I think lighting the signage is understandable.
I can with that, yeah, yeah. The two either side.
Yeah.
A bit excessive.
Yeah.
The two lantern things below and.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I don't know whether it's the, the way they've been shown on there, but they do look quite big. And I'm not sure that they're necessarily.
I can't read the dimensions on that drawing, can you?
No.
On Zoom, yes.
650 by 200, not sure. That's not how you do it.
Yeah. 650, that's about.
Is it by 285, can you see that?
That'd be. Seven foot by two foot, yeah.
285, 650 by 285, that's the line.
So those who understand the door, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's probably not so bad, but the.
It's the downlights, isn't it?
Yeah.
Floodlights.
Floodlights, yeah. What's also seen deep?
The signs, I think, yeah.
Although.
It says 31 LED floodlights. And if you look up 31 LED floodlight.
It's 100 lumens per watt.
150 to 200 watts and they're used for very bright security lights.
Yeah.
It's a bit much.
It's a bit excessive, actually.
It's actually well.
It's not going to give a nice ambiance either, but.
No.
No, I mean, I, I was thinking about this elevation because that all, that's opposite the, the letting rooms above, um.
Of Lotties. I tell you, the flats above the shops all along there.
And that Lotti's rooms in two different sites.
Yeah.
So there's, this brightness of 31 LED is enough to be made a large area such as a backyard or driveway in terms of security lighting. So it's, it's overkill.
It is, yeah, I mean, I can understand one line to, you know, to show the, the signage there and the lights above the sign there, which will probably light the doorway as well, I guess. These, these two are to light the signboards, but given that there's a street light there as well, I mean, I think, you know, it's definitely.
I thought it was dark there, but maybe.
We've got Lotties next door, haven't we, they've got lights on, yeah.
Yeah.
There is, there is a, as I understand it, partly through my recent brushes with licensing, there is a requirement to have entrances and exits illuminated to CCTV.
Right.
So, so there would be that requirement, but I still don't think that it needs that amount.
What about the, the painting on the, the, the right-hand picture? I mean, is that part of the application?
Yeah, it's an advert.
Do you see that, do you come up?
I don't know.
It's.
Might encourage them not to change their name here. It's fine, it's fine, it's not classy.
There was a big signs there saying houses, hadn't there, wasn't there?
Yeah. I can understand why, is that good enough, February, as you say, those, those apartments and flats above the shops?
Um, pointing down Catherine Street, you've got. The bookshop down the street running into the, above the shops.
You've got that bookshop and.
Catherine's and.
So there are a few with flats above down there, yeah.
And you have, they've got the double gates, then the wall, that lifted sort of like.
Then you've got Phoenix Terrace, I'm just, I can't see it, I'm just going to. So, yeah, all of the windows.
All those, there we go, that, that, and that.
No, it's, it's Lotties that are really affecting.
Once, once you get past.
Yeah, so it's just here that's going to.
It's something butcher, isn't it, really?
Yeah, but also just up from there, the rooms above, the Lotties aren't there, there are people coming on holiday. And, and Lotties haven't put in a comment, perhaps you can know about it.
They might not have been noted, just fine, though.
I mean, it does say on the application form that the lights will only be on during opening hours so, um, they won't be on all night or through the night, surely.
And I would imagine that the ones that are there for illuminating the signs would be from sort of pointing in towards the wall rather than out from the building.
Yeah, I mean, that, it doesn't really show that, I mean, this is just a, um.
Yeah.
It's a mock-up, yeah.
Yeah, you'd hope they'd be angled.
Yeah.
Being downlighters.
Yeah, so, one, one on this elevation as opposed to two or none?
I think they're entitled to light up the sign, aren't they? I don't, no, not at the risk of disturbing people.
Well, yeah, so only if it doesn't affect the.
I'd go against the, the.
I think the 230 watt, I, I have a very bright wall.
Yeah.
That is going to be lit so bright.
All about 130 watt on that.
I still think that you're asking still too much.
You think it's too much?
Yeah.
What about cable?
So, I'll just check what the consensus is about any lighting on the, on the ship elevation.
We know the rule.
It seems to be more subtle than that, doesn't it? It seems to be more subtle than that, doesn't it, actually? I would say, you know, that they do external lighting for signs, so that you can see them, but they don't need to light that whole place. I mean, I suppose people do, do people go out of that, of that back gate there in the summer?
Yeah, the access to the big, uh, news, to the full profit, you know, so that's the difference, yeah.
I wonder if they are worried about that.
I think the intention is just to illuminate the one out.
It's too much.
Too much.
So none?
I'd go with none.
Less bright.
I'd go with less bright. I think something's up there.
I just think it needs to be more subtle as well, Joyce, yeah.
Yeah, they need to find. Well, I don't think it's too bright, it doesn't disturb the people sleeping in the street. Okay, so we're going, uh, you're on the less bright, yeah, on the, okay, we're going with less bright on the.
Yeah.
On that bit.
Yeah. Reduce the number of lights on this elevation.
Yeah, so only the two ends, or those, those two elevations, one on the other side as well, above that window, I think that's unnecessary, because as I said, there is a street.
There's a street light.
So these two and these two, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, not to my taste, but not, but not my taste, it's out there.
And on this elevation, I mean, that one seemed like, that seemed, I don't know why that's there, really.
Yeah, yeah. Because they got one over.
I'm going with something logical, a logical light. Lighthouse.
Four on.
Um, so, that's I go for that. Okay, so.
And the rest, I think we're okay.
Yeah. So everybody happy with that? Oh, Steve, I think if I might, then that's for you, Sinanas, thank you. Um, well, that were the only ones, excuse me, that were the only ones that've actually highlighted for discussion. Um, I know Steve did mention the, um, the first one on the list, number six five six, five O four Road, um, but actually it's for a certificate of lawful permitted development. So the application is to determine whether or not it requires planning permission or whether it is permitted development. So, uh, actually there is, um. It's not for us to decide, I mean, if it, if it's determined that it does need planning permission, then obviously everyone will come back. Um.
Okay.
I think I was sorry to hear about the trees up on Agford Lane, but things like that, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's, um.
Logically needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Sorry, I said.
Brendan's old house.
Oh, yeah.
They come out.
Yeah.
Good man, I know a few times.
Yeah.
He's over at the family, no?
Yeah, I went to visit him, didn't I? Commenting those in romance, yeah.
So, uh.
Yeah, you want the first, the rest there?
Yeah. Happy to propose, so, feel it.
Or I do.
And that's Sinanas.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next meeting is on the seventeenth of April. This meeting has been brought forward with.
We've got to come to ten, so.
It's my fault, sorry, it's Michael bringing it forward.
It's all right.
Um, great, thank you very much, everyone, see you next time.